Hello. Good evening, everybody. Would you all please stand for a flag smile?
... to the United States of America, into the Republic which stands on nation and abroad in the visible, the living, the vast, the strong.
Welcome, everybody. I want to thank you for coming out tonight. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to be able to share the information on the proposed shoreline zoning and the property maintenance orders that we have. Tonight is going to be an unofficial meeting, and by that I mean the meeting did not get properly posted in the Rolling Thunder. And Rolling Thunder has sent us an apology, but we are going to repost this meeting. We will be doing a second meeting, and it will follow the protocol that's necessary. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Addie will be sharing the information with you, the apology. So Addie Bueker will be moderating for us this evening, and Kim Novak will be presenting as well as myself. So we have some data to share with you, and we'll have Addie come up and go through the process. And thank you for being here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to this meeting. Unfortunately, it isn't the official type. So while we get started, I just give you a few rules and regulations. First, like in a regular town meeting, if you have a question, please stand up, go to the center of the room, state your name and your question so that Kim can do the recording. We're going to try to get all these questions recorded so that the next time we meet, you'll be able to have those answers. I have a letter from the Rolling Thunder to validate the mix-up. This is from Dawn Rolling Thunder Express to Hatlen manager Chris. "I'm so sorry for dropping the ball on the shoreline zoning ad. I totally forgot to put it in." You had all the intent to put the ad in on April 10th and the 17th, and it's signed by Dawn from the Rolling Thunder. So that's where we begin tonight. Unfortunately, it's not an official meeting, but a really, really great way to get things aired out. So if you have any questions as we go forward... Did you say Kim was going to present before we get questions? Okay. Let's start with Chris, and he can tell you where we came from and where we're headed, and then we'll go right on to Kim. Thank you. Yes?
Is everyone allowed to speak and ask a question tonight, resident or non-resident?
He's shaking his head yes. So the question was, is everybody able to speak tonight, whether you're a resident or a non-resident? So that's how it'll be. And the answer is yes. By the way, thank you for recording this so we'll know exactly what was said and who did what to who and when.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate that. Chris? Hello? Very good. All right. I'd like to take a minute and read what the vision is for the town of Hatlen that was put into our comprehensive plan in 2016. The vision. "Our vision is a pleasant rural community that values and protects our natural resources, provides opportunity for good quality of life, encourages recreational opportunities, and recognizes the need for responsible development while maintaining a strong sense of community and a place in the region." The goal of the local economic development that was stated in our comprehensive plan was to promote an economic climate that increases job opportunities and overall economic well-being. One of the policies from the comprehensive plan in 2016 was to promote Great Moose Lake as a destination in the region and encourage reasonable development. "The Sletman and I feel that our approach of being business-friendly is consistent with the charge provided by the community back in 2016. We feel that in order to have a healthy economic community, that we need all business, big or small, and we are working to that end. Our current shoreline zone plan that was adopted in 2009 is not consistent with our vision and goals. How do we get here? The evolution of the shoreline zone." You should have a copy of that. Back in 2009, the shoreline zone got approved by the town and the state, and we ended up with three zones. We ended up with a resource protection zone, a stream protection zone, and a limited residential zone. Not exactly sure how that happened, but it did happen, and those zones have been in place since 2009. It wasn't until August of 2022 that I became aware that the downtown was improperly zoned. So if you follow along here, in August, I became aware of that. On August 10th, Dawn and I talked about a limited commercial zone for the shoreline zone. Next, in October of 2022, Dawn Heard, Brent Lawson, Phil Stevens, and I were supposed to have a meeting at the town office. Brent Lawson was unable to attend. Kim and I... On the 18th, Kim and I spent approximately three hours. We discussed the shoreline zoning rules, the districts, and what might work well around the lake and downtown. We discussed home occupations in the limited residential zones and debated whether limited commercial or general development two was more appropriate with various contractors around the lake, vacation rental units, which have no official category, and a brewing operation. Downtown, we discussed the general development one category. The next... We went back and forth with Dawn a little bit through November, got back to March, and Dawn had left, and Colin Clark became the responsible person for the town of Hatlen. He was, in fact, Dawn's boss, and he took over her responsibilities. March 23rd of this year, 2023, Kim Novak spoke with Colin Clark for one hour and a few minutes. Colin guided Kim on the zoning options that he thought would be specific for the town. Colin also guided Kim on how to clarify the seasonal rental activity. That is how we got to this meeting tonight with the zoning information that we're presenting. And Kim is going to be going over the details of some of the things that we've changed. Does anybody have any questions thus far? Yes? Yep, please.
Karen Toll. Thanks. Hi, Karen Toll, Tenold Duffy Lane, Hatlen. I'm just wondering with the publication, snafu, is the vote still going to happen on the 6th? Or...
It is not. It is not going to happen on May 6th. We are going to have to do a special town meeting. We're in hopes to get it in the month of May. Anything else? For those of you who don't know, this is Kim Novak. Kim is the code enforcement officer, and Kim has countless number of hours in this process. We've been on a couple of different paths over the last several months, and she's done an amazing job. So do you want to walk in? All right.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me? Because I love microphones right here. I am Kim Novak, the code officer for the town of Hatlen. I became the code officer in August with a lot on the plate as far as to get the town in order with the shoreline zone, property maintenance issues, and a whole big list of things, which I am happy to do and eager to do for the town. Some of you have seen the shoreline zone ordinance and proposed, and some of you have also looked at the 2009 that's currently in place. The question I get a lot is, Kim, what's the difference between what we have now and what is being proposed? So you will see it's titled shoreline zoning ordinance, summary of changes. So I went sentence by sentence and block by block and compared the two and tried to capture everything that was there. And you'll see where it is on the page number and the current ordinance and where the proposed one is. So I'd like to highlight a couple of these that might help clarify some information. The big one being, yes, on the official shoreline zoning map, we added back limited commercial and the general development one to the established districts for the town of Hatlen. The other bigger information that's included in the new proposed is the DEP changed the way we can look at non-conforming structures when people want to add on, add additions, and how we calculate their footage. It used to be a volume. Now it's called a footprint. And with that footprint, it's just an easier way for the planning board and myself to make a calculation to see where those individual properties are and how they can expand, if they can expand. And on those expansions, they also clarify where that structure is now on the property. Is it 25 feet from the water? Is it 75 feet? With the different feet, depending on where you come from the water, you have a different set of square footage. The 30% can still apply. They're going to take whichever is greater. And all that is going to be three, four, and five. It's lengthy, but it's in there. When it comes to individual properties and you want to do something, that's when you come see me. Because it's way too hard for me to just to give you, hey, if you have this property, you can do this, because you have to take into account your lot coverage. How big's your driveway? Is it sitting in the shoreline zone? That counts. So any questions on a different day about your specific property? Please just give me a call or come see me. So the big thing is limited commercial and general development. You'll see those added back to the table. That's now on pages nine and 10. Along with that, we captured the residential structures in use as vacation rentals. You'll see that as 13G. It does not require a permit process, but it captures that they are allowed in those areas. That was a conversation I had with Mr. Clark that recommended, hey, this comes up all the time. The vacation rentals come up all the time. A lot of towns then choose to capture it in their land use table so that it's there. Because everybody goes, well, is it a business? Is it not a business? But it's out of my home. I don't live there full-time. So now it's in there. And that says 13G if you follow along. The next biggest item on the back is everybody likes to cut a lot of trees, right? Well, they've added sections QRNs regarding hazard trees. So there are times you do not have to get a permit from DEP for that, but you could come see me. Myself as the code can also refer you to a forester if I see it needs to be fit in order to cut trees down. The best thing I can tell you about that is please ask me before you go out and start removing trees within that shoreline zone. We have a lot of that going on, as most of us are aware. A lot of people aren't familiar with the rules, but we can't... I cannot tell DEP, well, they just didn't know. That's not going to work. So I just say I'm reachable by email, by phone. I'm here Tuesdays. I'm also here Thursdays by appointment. I'm here most Fridays. You can shoot me an email. I'm here to help you. And if I don't know the answer, I have plenty of people that can help me get to that right answer. The other part of that is erosion control certification. For anybody that hires a contractor that's going to work within that zone, they need to be erosion control certified. And all the specifications are covered right in that paragraph. And any contractor. They don't have to be an excavator. If you have Joe the carpenter, and he's going to move some dirt for you within that zone and do a certain spec work, he has to be certified. It doesn't matter what his contract is. If he's acting as a contractor on your property and he's moving soil, he needs to be, he or she, he needs to be erosion control certified. And that's also explained. You'll see that on the new one, 33. The other big portion of this is we need photos now coming up. Photos are going to be required pre and post of your projects. And that's also to capture, hey, what did we have there before? Unfortunately, we don't have a large footprint of everybody's property to say, this is what it looked like before so-and-so came in and made changes, or this is what it looked like when the previous people bought it, and now it's this. We have to work together. There is no way I can be in every single place at every single point. We have to work together to educate, get the information out there. I care just about the lake as everybody else. I can tell you that from my own point of view. But we have to work as a team and get the information. And people that come in, from wherever they're coming in, they might not know. So it's going to be our job together to inform them. I'm going to do the best I can, of course, to get word out, whether it's in newsletters, when I finally get time to do the Facebook page. But I need everybody's help. I really do. I need people to say, hey, before you cut that tree, you might want to look at... Check the ordinance. You might want to give the code a call. Word of mouth will only benefit yourself, your property, and the properties around you. Do I have any questions on the summary of changes?
Thank you.
And it's John, I got you.
Yeah, John, and I live on Pleasant Street. Can a homeowner move their dirt without being certified?
Yes, they can as a homeowner. Not as a contractor.
Or a property owner? They can move the dirt?
Correct, you can. If you're not hiring a contractor, that's one of those things. When I took the erosion control class, which I was sort of like, wow. But do you have to follow all the state rules as far as erosion control, your hay bales, your silt fence? Absolutely. You still need to follow the proper protocol if you're doing dirt. And that's going to be a silt fence. It's going to be a hay bale that could be mixed. And a silt fence doesn't have a gap underneath it. Stuff's not supposed to flow underneath. It's supposed to be dug under the ground. Again, if you have a question on that, I have a DEP rep that's been doing it for decades that knows every little detail. So don't hesitate to ask. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. So we'll move on to the special local condition list. Another nice little spreadsheet for you that I tried to put together. You'll see a list of the property address, map and lot, the current acres or square foot we have on file at the town and their card, whether they have waterfrontage or not, the current use, previous uses, and the proposed zone. The GD1 means general development one. The LC is a limited commercial. Unless I've missed something, I've gone over this quite a few times to capture all the businesses that we currently have. And a note on the commercial lot size. Everybody's... Some people are like, well, that means anybody could come in and do this commercial. Do whatever. Put up a skyscraper. Do big buildings. You need 60,000 square feet to do a commercial lot size. 60,000. So if you're not sitting on 60,000 square feet after this goes, you're not going to be able to do a commercial building on that lot in the shoreline zone, separate from out of the shoreline zone, I should say. So that's something that I wanted to share with everybody because there was a lot of question of, are we going to be able to get skyscrapers? Are they going to build big garages? There is also a height limit within the shoreline zone for buildings as well. So I hope I clarified that. And that's all found. You'll see that by the land use table, I believe, in the new one as well, that shows the current lot. We cannot make that any less strict. So we can't make that 20,000. It has to be 60,000 or more restrictive. That's the DEP start is 60. Any questions on that? So does everybody need a few seconds to think and look over the current zone, proposed? And again, if there's anybody that wanted to see this get to town meeting any faster, that would be myself right now. I would love to focus... Not that this is not critical and important to me to get done, but I would love to shift focus a little bit to some other things that residents are really asking me to do as far as cleaning up the town and moving forward on some other projects. So it was really unfortunate that this happened with the thunder, but mistakes happen. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Barry Norton. I'm 37th grade, Mr. R.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant's down here, sir. Previous use of car dealership?
Yes, sir.
No, it wasn't. I lived there beside him. There wasn't a car dealership there ever on Great Moose Drive.
We have a statement from Mr. Raul that lived there.
It was a car dealership. It was a residency. He didn't even live there for six months a year. That's bullshit.
I appreciate your language, though. Thank you. Storage. Storage. Store... Storage car dealership. Appreciate your comment. But I'm going to remind people, please, let's watch the language.
Hi.
We have another question, Kim.
Hang on just a minute. Thank you very much, Kim, for presenting that as well as you do. So since this isn't an official meeting, take a breath. Recognize why we're here. Know that there's pros and cons both ways. We're here to hear both. We're also here to take down your questions. Kim is... Sam, actually, is documenting. So take a breath. Go ahead.
Hi, and thank you for all you've done. I appreciate your hard work. I think probably it would be safe to say that I probably have more knowledge of what's been on that road than anybody here.
Did you state your name? I'm sorry, man.
Cindy Hawkins. I walk on that road every day, and I have three years. I've been on that camp road since I was three. I know Mr. Raul very well. He was a friend. He used to store his own cars in that garage. His dealership is up by El Hill. So that needs to be corrected. He did not sell cars or have a workplace out of that building. That just... That needs to be fixed. And I think everybody who is on the camp road, there are people who live on the camp road, will tell you that that was not used.
Okay, hold that thought just for a second. Do we have that recorded? That that should be changed? We're all set with that? Thank you for that comment. Next?
And I'm not saying whether I'm for or against anything, but I'm just... I walk that road. I know the road. I kayak that lake up and down every day.
Yep.
I've watched people come in in the middle of the night when I've been out at 5:00 in the morning and dump and put a beach in the next day. I have pictures of what the road looked like before and what the... And I'm not saying I have an opinion one way or another, but I know what I know.
Okay. You had two things. One was the storage, and there was one more thing.
I'm just saying, he might... He had a lot of vehicles that were his pride and joy that he used to drive. He stored his own vehicles in his garage.
Yeah, I think that's the way we're going to be listing it now as storage. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
His business was up on Raul, up on El Hill.
Yep, we got it. We got it. Thank you.
Got a question, John?
Kathy Clifford, Eight Halfway Point Lane, Hatlen. Vicki, could you just go over the proposed zone quickly? GD1, what it actually means, and LC, general, quickly? Thank you.
Test, test? Good. Okay, so you'll see the definitions or the clarification on page eight on limited residential district, limited commercial district, and general development one district. A limited commercial... Limited commercial districts include areas of mixed light commercial and residential uses exclusive of the stream protection district, which should not be developed as intensely as the general development districts. So less intense as the GD. This district includes areas of two or more contiguous acres in size devoted to a mix of residential and low-intensity business and commercial uses. Industrial uses are prohibited. General development one district. The general development district includes the following types of existing intensely-developed areas: areas of two or more acres devoted to commercial, industrial, or intensive recreational activities or a mix of such activities including, but not limited to, the following: A, areas devoted to manufacturing, fabricating, or other industrial activities; B's on the next page: areas devoted to wholesaling, warehousing, retail trade, and service activities or other commercial activities; and C, areas devoted to intensive recreational development and activities such as, but not limited to, amusement parks, racetracks, and fairgrounds; areas otherwise discernible as having patterns of intensive commercial, industrial, or recreational uses. Did that answer what you, you want on?
You all set with that, Kathy? Next. Uh, actually, you, you should take a moment at this time. This is a great, great evening to warm up to what is really going to take place when it's actually a legal meeting, right? So take the time, look at this, get an opinion in your mind, and then share it with everybody. The more you know, the easier it is for us to make a great decision when it comes time to vote. Do we have any other questions? Did I see somebody standing over here? You guys are all right? No questions? Yes, come on up, grab the mic.
Oh, no, none at all. It's easier to do that than hold on to the mic. Thanks. Uh, Bob Bryant, I'm the owner of Bryant's Brewing, so I'm the cause of the kerfluffle. So I apologize to everybody for kerfluffling the town. But, uh, I wanted to make some comments regards to what's been going on. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the Tolles for bringing to light the challenges with the shoreline zoning ordinance in Harland. It's clear to anyone who reads the ordinance that it does not have the best interests of the town of Harland documented. But let's review how we got here, shall we? In the summer of twenty twenty-one, I started the process to open a brewery and coffee brewery in my garage at one thousand nine Great Moose Drive. Knowing I was close to the water, but not knowing what I didn't, my first call was to the state of Maine D E P. After a discussion with them about the fact that I was close to a lake within the shoreline zone, as I would come to find out, and that I needed a good way to handle my wastewater from a one barrel brewing system, we landed on having a holding tank installed, having wastewater pumped and taken to the local wastewater treatment plant. For as I was told by the D E P, if it wasn't going to the ground, they don't care. I then received an email with the subject matter, Nano Brewery, from that D E, D E P official that stated, Robert, as long as Harland's plumbing code allows you to install a holding tank for your brewing wastewater, I'm sure Jake and company at the treatment plant will be willing to accept your tank pump outs. With this email in hand, I then went to the town's planning board and discussed with them that I wanted to open a small brewery in my garage, and in order to do so, I needed to install a holding tank. Oh, I'm sorry. I can really yell if you want. Okay. Lost my place. Uh, they requested D E P input, for which I provided the email. I then went to three more monthly planning board meetings and missed one as they researched what needed to be done. They enlisted the local plumbing inspector, Phil Stevenson, to contact the state D E P and determine what, if any, issues there may be. Phil spoke with the state and they concurred that a holding tank would be okay to install for my wastewater. Unfortunately, Phil didn't get this in writing. After a very thorough review from the planning board and positive feedback from the state, they gave the okay for me to install the, the holding tank with implicit approval to open my small brewery. Alas, I did not ask for a change of use for my garage, nor was I asked since it's a bit one. It was simply implied that approval of the holding tank installation was approval to open my brewery. I've been accused of not going through this process. I can assure you, I did. And despite any reservations with Debbie Cooper's posts and history with the town, she confirmed this in a public post on Facebook. During this time, I was still home brewing and engaged with my neighbors to provide feedback on the beer I was brewing. The gendros came over many times to both sample and offer donations for the beer that I was then brewing, but could not sell without a license. The feedback I got from both them and the noise, as well as others in the neighborhood, was a hearty cheers and welcome to the neighborhood. Upon approval of my plan, I engaged a soils engineer, Bob Vile, and a contractor, Wayne Traffton, to design and install my holding tank and garage plumbing at great personal cost. I then worked to procure the equipment and setup necessary to install a brewery and bathroom in my garage, opening on February fourth, twenty twenty-two. At this time, I posted on Facebook that we were opening and inviting people to the garage to enjoy a craft beer or a fresh roasted and brewed coffee. It was only at this time did I get the first negative feedback from none other than Jimmy Toll on Facebook. Since that time, the Tolles' attacks on me, the town, and my business have only escalated, bringing us to this point. Frankly, I'm glad we're here. We need to get the shoreline zoning fixed. This is important, not just for Bryant's Brewing, but also for the entire town, including the Tolles' laundromat in the middle of town. I'm accused of getting preferential treatment, but the reality is, anyone who established any business in this town within two hundred and fifty feet of the lakes or rivers since two thousand and nine has gotten preferential treatment, including the Tolles, since none of them, based upon the Tolles' reading of the ordinances and processes that should have been, none of them should have been allowed to open. The first pass of the shoreline zone ordinance opened limited commercials the entire shoreline zone around the lakes and rivers, while setting the downtown up as a general development zone. Due to the uproar that was caused primarily from people who do not reside in Harland, the select board and town management decided to keep the general development zone and limit the commercial zone focused to meet the needs of all the businesses in town. That is what is fair for all the businesses that were established under the prior ordinance. That is also what is best for the town in general, to keep all the businesses currently operating in business. We complain about the dilapidated state of the town, and we complain about how high the taxes are. This town needs business and needs every business currently in business. Shutting down any one of us only sends a message that Harland doesn't want to do business. That does not increase our, our, um, that does not increase our tax base, decrease our individual tax burden, or add revenue that can go towards improving our town. When I moved back to Maine after a lengthy and relatively successful career, I wanted to give back the place I grew up, so I joined the M C I trustees from where I graduated in nineteen seventy-eight. I started this business to grow into central Maine to provide some of that additional tax basis and revenue so badly needed. And now, instead of just talking about doing something about the tannery in downtown Harland, I've applied for and been appointed by the governor and confirmed by the senate to the Maine redevelopment land bank authority. The authority's mission is to review all the buildings in towns like Harland that are abandoned by their corporate owners to establish redevelopment efforts and to re, and to revitalize downtowns like Harland's. If Harland wishes to have any chance at that revitalization, it is crucial that they are willing to do what is necessary to attract new businesses. Getting the shoreline zone ordinance passed and keeping all current businesses in Harland open is a great first step in doing so. Finally, I'd like to say thanks to the select board and Chris, who have all given their support to Bryant's Brewing. Contrary to the accusations levied by the Tolles in regards to overreach, it's been my experience that Chris is aboveboard and dedicated to doing what is right for the town. It's a pleasure to have John Heikele come discuss things over a cup of decaf and letting me know he's in full support of what I've done. I'm pleased to have signs for Mark Brooks on my front lawn, as I know he stands for integrity and puts the town's needs above his own. And I'm glad to have Jerry Martin maintain a calm and collected presence, helps me remain calm while I'm being continually wrongly accused and slandered. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for that bit of history. That was awesome to listen to. Uh, again, take a moment. If you have questions, now's a great time.
Bill Pragdis, I live on Great Moose Drive. I've been here over twenty years now. And the one thing that has impressed me over that period of time is how many exceptions are given to people in
You want to come up here? Sure, come on up.
I'm, am I on? Okay. And those things have happened because of exception to by previous code enforcement officers and faulty planning from the planning board. And small towns have rumors, special treatment for relatives, friends of relatives, et cetera. Now, everyone can get a long list and a thick pile of papers that tell us how far something should be from the lake or from the corner. However, exceptions are just that. They are exceptions. And a year ago, when the issue of Bryant Brewing was brought up, we were assured at a meeting that all of the proper permits had been met. There were no problems. Licenses had been considered and taken care of. And at that time, apparently, no one knew that the entire town of Harland was illegal. So those can be fixed, but one of the things that can't be fixed when we talk about community is the impact it has on people that have lived on this lake and along that shoreline for years. In the summertime, when Bryant Brewery has, uh, an engagement, a party of some type, Great Moose Drive becomes just barely a single lane road. There are cars parked on both sides of the street. There are golf carts trucking people up to the Vicku Hill where there is a lot, a large one cleared of timber a while back, that people park their cars. Those of us that live there, it's dangerous. People are walking. We have vacation rentals, yes. And point is, is there are a lot of people here that enjoy that lake for what it's supposed to be. And now if I look at the proposal that we allow more businesses, mi- minor businesses, low impact businesses, or whatever else, you've got to think about what that does to what that lake was meant to be and to the community that lives there now. There are plenty of places you can put a micro brewery. There are plenty of places you can do some other things. The D buildings down here, you know, acres of them that are in a conventional downtown business. But I, for one, oh, and by the way, the first weekend that Bryant Brewing was opened up, I ended up, a guy in my driveway in the ditch couldn't hit his hat, his, excuse me, couldn't hit his butt with both hands. Well, I've been down at Bryant's. I can get out of here. There is an impact. And I don't know Bryant. I don't care. But more business on that lakeshore is not going to be good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those very candid comments. I appreciate that.
The traffic, the, the boat traffic, the safety, the, with the, the shoreline with the boats coming and going constantly. What, how does that affect the lake? There's so many things that should have been addressed, and in a public meetings like this, so we could all talked about it, brought these issues up, we had none of that because he did not put in writing what his intentions were. We had none of it. We had no options, none. He just opens his doors and expects everybody to sit back and say, hey, here I am, come drink beer. I like it. So, and then the other part of this whole thing is a brewery is considered a manufactured facility, and a manufactured facility is not allowed in commercial or residential zones.
Thank you, Jim. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I'm Tom Keith, I live at fifty Main Street. I did grow up on that lake though. And my question is not for Bryant's or for Jimmy. My question is for the town, because of the town's people. And the gentleman that just spoke over there and said that some people get special favors because of their last name or who they're friends with or whatever, I tend to agree because sometimes it's kind of obvious. Like, for example, if Mr. Bryant, which I'm not saying he didn't, but if he did get all the proper paperwork and it was all approved by the planning board, by the town, by you folks, and the whole nine yards, why are us townspeople paying for a lawyer? Why are we even involved? The town should not be paying for a lawyer for this. This is his battle and his battle. Why, if you guys didn't do anything wrong, which you're making it look like you did because you're hiring a lawyer, if everything was done on the up and out, why do we need a lawyer? I just wanted that out there. We're, we are paying for the lawyer. Not, I mean, you guys are as well because you live in town, but we are paying for this lawyer. I can only imagine how much it's costing us. Why?
Tom, would you like to address that question to either the board or Chris?
Yeah, Chris.
Thanks.
Chris? Yeah, so if you look at this list, it's a Town of Harland special local condition list, okay? The reason that we have an attorney involved is because every li, every business on this list has been set up illegally, every single one of them. So there are the, every business on here should have had a land use permit. They should have had a shoreline zone permit. That did not happen. Since two thousand and nine, every business on here does not have the appropriate permit. That's why an attorney is involved.
Can I rebut that? So, okay, I, I'll agree with that, but I've been to every selectman twice with a lawyer there, and the only business he talks about when he comes is Bryant's Brewing. The only one. It's, it's kind of obvious that he's been hired because of the situation between him and the Tolles. And you're just throwing in there the, the rest of them, and that's why. I, I have it all recorded.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Uh, but the fact is, is that all of these, we have been working diligently to get the town in a position where we are legal.
All high level.
So none of these businesses have been open legally. They, they don't have a change of use. Uh, they don't have a shoreline zone permit. So again, we are trying to do what's best for the entire community, and we're trying to get them situated so we can move forward.
I believe that you are.
We're trying to move forward. So, um, this, e- everyone is making this about Jimmy Toll and Bob Bryant. It really isn't. It's really about the Town of Harland being out of compliance with the shoreline zone. Thank you, Chris, for responding. Yes. Hang on just a second till you get the mic. Introduce yourself again, please.
Cindy, um, I have a couple of points I'd like to make. First, I'd like to say I know nothing about any of this. I, but, and I paid over a hundred thousand dollars in taxes on my little shack on the water. If you don't believe it's a shack, you can go inside and you can see it. Um, and I found out when I went to get my mail, I had a three-page letter to read, one I'd never heard of. It's upsetting to me that, living here, nobody thought, oh, I guess you don't have to tell these people. They're not important. That's upsetting. That's on the town. That's not on him. Okay, he shouldn't have to, to go and let the town know he's putting a business in. That's on, whose obit is, let people know that you can have a whole shoreline changing of, of ordinances. Um, so that. My second point is, I think if it was me and I was in charge, I might say, let's take care of downtown Harland first. That's a priority, really big priority. Let's get those businesses up and, and running, or make them legal, and let's keep this issue on a different vote. Like, I think we should be voting on changing the stuff downtown and then voting on the stuff, whatever needs to be voted for on the lake. It's two separate situations. It, they're not the same. I mean, yes, I get that they don't have their business permits, but those businesses have been in years and Okay, so some, but, I, but I
Let's stop the conversation and come through the mic.
Let's stop the conversation and come through the mic, please. Yes.
I just think we need to stop, slow down, and I think we need to lower the rhetoric, okay? People... My mother got a letter in her mailbox that she read to me that was horrifying to me, basically calling me because I don't live here year-round, an outsider. Okay? That's upsetting to me.
I would only have one question for that, and probably should be looking at the selectmen. Were any of these things discussed in meetings, selectmen meetings, throughout time? And are they posted on our website and certainly with this camera? So, people could have found out by attending a meeting?
Okay. Like I said, I live up in Hampden, and I'm not on social media. And I got notified by somebody who I've never heard of, who sent a letter. And it would have just felt a lot better if it came from the people that are supposed to be looking out for my best interest.
Okay. Hold that thought just for a second. Chris, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, as I said, we know that there's a protocol for advertising in the Rolling Thunder, and that did not happen. And that is why a lot of people did not get the information. We utilize the Rolling Thunder for most of our communication. There are many people who do not live in town. We can't reach out to every one of them when something like this is going on individually. That... Or we can't advertise in every single paper. It's impossible to do that from a financial standpoint.
Hang on just a second. We've got another rebuttal. Yes. Come on up.
One thing that was passed is that we can develop that Facebook page. I know not everybody's on Facebook, but I had asked for that page for the reason that there are a lot of people that are out of state to share information and get it out there more to the public. I just want to let you know. The page is not up yet. I got to get a chance to work on it, but I appreciate it. Right. And I did not... I don't know the letters that went out or circulated. I heard about them. But I appreciate the comment and the communication, and that's one of the reasons that we want to do that page is so that information is disseminated as well.
Thank you. We have another talker, and I think you want to go afterwards? Thank you. Go ahead. Are you addressing this to anybody or just the audience? To Chris?
Yes, Chris. This is Rod Pease. I wasn't there until I dropped it. Chris, who picks the planning board? Is that you or who?
Actually, the... They're appointed by the selectmen. That is the process for it. We... I have appointed people in the past because we didn't have members enough to have a quorum and things of that nature. That is something that we found the... Sam was able to find the details of that back in history. Again, we didn't have the data in front of us all the time, so she's been able to find that out. So, the planning board is really appointed by the selectmen. It's their authority. I know that came out out there, and I did, in fact, ask the attorney yesterday about that, what the... It was said that we don't have a valid planning board. That's not really the case because in some communities, the town manager does do it. Some communities, the selectmen do it. Some communities, they're elected. In our particular instance, they are not elected.
So, you're saying you picked the planning board this time? People on the planning board were picked by you?
I picked a few of the members. Some of them have been there longer than I have. I didn't have anything to do with picking. Randy Butler is here. Randy has been on there longer than I've been in town. Dana Littlefield has been on there longer than I've been in town. I'm not sure, out of the rest of them, I know that I'm pretty sure that I talked with Rusty Wilson. I believe I was the recruiter for Rusty Wilson. I also recruited Tim Belanger and Steve Seekins.
So, okay. So, you picked the planning board. Do the selectmen have any say in the planning board? Who picked... Chris picked them. Did you guys have a say in the planning board? I don't think you did.
Are you addressing the selectmen this time? Which one?
All three of them.
All right. Need a speaker.
You guys have...
Wait a minute, Rod. I need a speaker. Which one?
Mike or John.
All right. Mark?
Thanks. A lot of discussion out there about the planning board recently. We actually had a discussion with Chris to find out, let's find it in the proper way of the bylaws. I think Sam has come to you. I couldn't tell you if we appointed the board or not. A lot of things come through, a lot of appointments come through. You've been to a lot of the selectmen's meetings. We've got a question, though. Is the inference that there's something wrong with the planning board?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think...
Wait. And... Half of them are family?
Wow, yeah. And all of my friends to Chris.
Well, friends to Chris.
Yeah. And almost half of them will be part of Chris's family.
Part of Chris's family, okay. Well, now, let's just call it spade to spade, all right? Randy is my brother-in-law, and he's on there. He was on there before I became a selectman. Mr. Littlefield, Dana Littlefield, was on there before Chris was a town manager. One thing that is hard is it's hard to recruit sometimes people to want to come into some of these planning boards or any board in town. So, when you get someone who wants to, desires to, it's not like it's been standing room only for people to want to come on board. Now, what I would say, if you or any other member would like, that's here tonight, would like to be on a planning board, would love to hear from you. The inference of nepotism is not anything that I have found. So, that might be your experience. It certainly isn't mine. But I'll defer to the other selectmen as well to see if they have been affected by or seen affected by the town manager or any of the rest of us in terms of, I think, what your inference is, nepotism.
As far as myself, I've not appointed anyone. I am aware of the board. Again, I am happy to see people like engineers, builders. We have Mr. Seekins over there, was an LPI for years. It's hard to find qualified people that are willing to do it for nothing and take abuse on top of it. So, as far as nepotism, I don't see it in our board. They're very well-qualified. They're very smart people, and we have to rely on them to give us feedback, given their expertise. So, I can't speak to the fact of who appointed who, but as far as the board in general, I think they're well-qualified for the positions they're in.
Yeah, hi, John Heickel. I do think the board is well-qualified, and you're lucky to have the members that want to serve on that board. Small towns happen to have a lot of relatives wherever you go. So, that's really a problem either unless it's being abused, and I don't see that. But there is a process for the formulation of a planning board. And I believe if Sam researched it, and I'm sure she did because she's wonderful at doing that sort of thing, I believe that a planning board member is appointed by the select board or elected. Those are two choices in the state of Maine, according to Maine State statute. I believe, as I read it. In the four years that I've been on the select board, I haven't appointed or renewed anyone's member status on the planning board. I have asked the question, length of term, sometimes they're two, maybe three years, but I don't know if those terms have expired. But clearly, in the four years that I've sat on the board, I haven't had any re-upping of anyone's term. So, that's how I see it. I think we're lucky to have it. I would certainly like to continue this conversation and get everybody with a sworn oath of office on record and either appointed by the... Recommended by the chair of the planning board, appointed by the select board, or elected. And just clean that up, and I think that would be fine. But as far as the planning board members go, I don't have any problem with any one of them. I think we're extremely lucky to have that much experience on one board.
Hi, I'm Lisa Sower. I live on Great Moose Drive. And my question is, did the planning board know when Bryant's came to them for permits or whatever the requirements were, that this was going to be a business and not a, I'm home brewing?
Did you get that question okay? You're grinning over there. Did you get it okay? You want to come explain?
My name is Randy Butler. My name is Randy Butler. I've been on the planning board since, I can't remember, 2005, '06, '07, somewhere around that area. And my recollection, and I think Mr. Bryant confirmed it tonight in the meeting, when he presented the information, it was a year and a half ago, in my recollection, we didn't have any notes that were clear and concise and clarified it. But my understanding was that when he submitted, it was for the brewery only. I didn't have any understanding that it would be for the taproom. In fact, he kind of confirmed that tonight when he stated the history, so I appreciate that background. So, that's what we approved it as, from what I recall. Unfortunately, the other two members... Well, I guess I can't say that. There were... At the very first meeting, I believe it was just Dana, myself, and Tim Belanger. And I'm not sure if we gave any approval at that first meeting. It's not recorded in the minutes that any approval was given at that first meeting. So, I can't speak for sure. I'm not sure if other planning board members have something different that they remember, but that's what I recall. And I'll stay by that until somebody shows me some paperwork, otherwise.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I live on Great Moose Drive as well.
What was your name? I'm sorry.
I know, there's never been a commercial business on Great Moose Drive. Does anyone dispute that? So, we got our first commercial business, the Bryant Brewery. Clearly, the residents of the... Permanent residents of the Great Moose Drive always have seen it as a residential area and not a commercial area. Our summer residents that come in and stay over during the summer, they clearly see it as a residential area, no place to live without commercial businesses. The list of businesses you have that are in... They're not even on the lake. They're on the river in town. It's very different. There's no boats going up and down. The river in town has all do on the lake. If you have somebody or some resident on the lake having a commercial business... That person can...
Testing one-two?
So, I don't understand how a commercial business could be approved on Great Moose Drive. It's never been commercial. I don't see why it is now. I think it's brewery thing where that increases traffic, has a potential to pull alcohol and potentially have drunks driving down the road on a road, narrow, twisty, windy, and has summertime, has a lot of people walking dogs, walking on the roadside. Increased traffic puts the people on Moose Drive at risk.
Test one-two, test. Yes, thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you. Karen Toll again. I think you all know my position on this issue. I just wanted to respond to a couple of Mr. Bryant's comments. We are three houses to the left of the brewery.
Excuse me, just a second. Would you like to come up front and address the problem? Would you please? That thing sounds like it might be kicking out, so help yourself here.
I'm not an eloquent public speaker, so I apologize. I wanted to respond to a couple of Mr. Bryant's comments. We were... We had an open mind about the brewery. Our laundromat's at risk because of this whole process. We feel strongly enough about the lake to fight this fight. We are three houses to the left of Mr. Bryant's. The music is annoying. The... We all want to be on the lake, or almost everybody wants to be on the lake. And we don't want to go through this process 100 times. How are you going to know you've got it right? Or what will that process be?
I don't have any legal answer for you. I think what we would do is find out what happens at the, what would be the special town meeting now, to figure out from the people why they voted it down. I mean, there's no way you go to the ballot and say, I want to keep Toll's Laundromat and this one in the brewery. It would be, if you voted it down, we'd try to seek the input from people to figure out what was the issue. Some people might say, it's easy to know. It would be the brewery. Well, there are just as many people talking to us in favor of these things than there are against. So, I'd be honest with you right now, I don't know. I think procedurally, we'd have to maybe even check with our attorney for some guidance, say, what do you do? And they're pretty good at process. Unless anybody else has an idea. I don't think we know. We'll wait for that to happen and then try to figure it out from there. Thanks.
Thank you. It's a good question, Karen. Just like we're doing tonight, I think is the way to get to a better solution to what we're going through. I don't mind public hearings. I don't mind public gatherings and talking about it and hashing this out. And I don't believe we can beat this dead horse to death. I believe that this is such an important issue for this community that we need to get it right before we vote for something that's going to last permanently. And I don't mind coming back here several times until the majority, the vast majority of us feel that we have a product that's ready for prime time. Thank you, John. I bet you're going to know when I'm going to ask you, right? Our fake microphone isn't working, so would you come up, please? It was part of Save the Chesapeake Bay, a big Save the Bay initiative. Many of those requirements and techniques have been now adopted around the country in other jurisdictions. Whenever you go and revise an ordinance such as this, there are always competing interests that makes the process difficult. What is making this process even more difficult here is we have a small group of personnel, a small group of people that are taking their personal issue with a local business to the greater public and put it in a public forum and spending our tax dollars to fight this issue, which I do not appreciate. Tax dollars are in short supply, and we're spending it because someone doesn't like the brewery. When the brewery said they were going to come, we said, "Great." We've gone to it by road, by snowmobile, and by boat. One of the things different between what we're experiencing now and what I went through years ago with the county is the advent of Facebook and electronic media. That didn't exist in those days. We were just developing websites, okay, back then. So, with that being said, comments for or against were either done in person or in writing and mailed in. The electronic media is great. You can get instantaneous information out to large audiences. However, what I've been reading on some of the electronic media and the Facebook pages is disturbing. Much of it is very one-sided. Much of it is inaccurate. Since we've moved here, we've made an effort to support local businesses, all the local businesses here. And as explained, as Chris explained, all of them are operating with the permits and approvals they thought they required, that they needed to have in place. That's how they're operating. We have since found out that may not be the case. But singling out one and spending all this taxpayer money is just inappropriate and wrong, has no place in a setting. You address everything if you're going to go in that, down that road. Further to this, just a quick ride around the lake, and one can easily see any number of activities that are violation of the current shoreland zoning ordinance. Everything from clearing, tree cutting, building, renovations, walkways, all over the lake. Now, some of those predate the ordinance, would be grandfathered in. Many are not. They're new, they're recent beings. I applaud the town for the effort made in their current draft. They spent considerable time and effort working with DEP, working with their own staff, talking to individuals to develop. The approach they took was, let's get, let's draw the line in the sand today and get everybody approved and current as of today. And then let's go forward with a clearer, better-defined ordinance that is fair to everyone. Two parts to every ordinance. There'd be standard ordinance, all those types of documents. One is generating a document that is easily understandable, and the other part of that is then enforcing it. I do believe they have a document that's easier to understand, still a complicated But I do think they're going to have a problem enforcing it. Having a single, part-time staff to try and deal with an area this large with a document that complex, I think is going to be a challenge. I would just encourage the town that once the, once you have your new ordinance in place, you give it some time, see how it goes, and then evaluate your manpower needs to see if a signal, if the code enforcement officer needs additional help. I'd also like to comment on some of the hysteria that's been peddled on some of the websites and some of the mass mailings. You need to understand zoning approval is not the final say. That is only one step in the approval process. Before a project can proceed, you have site plan approval, erosion settlement control approval, stormwater management, building permits. You get really bad floodplain permits when you get the feds involved. So zoning, because you're permitted by zoning, doesn't mean that business is going to show up, or a business is going to show up. In fact, Kim made mention earlier of square footage requirements that come into play, height limitation. So while you have some people say, "Oh, we're going to do this," no, you're not. You're not going to go through those other hurdles. So this zoning ordinance is not an end-all. Okay, shoreland zoning. DEP previously published a document called Main Shoreland Zoning, A Handbook for Shoreland Owners, dated 2008. It was a great document. The document helped explain in greater detail, as I like to say, because I can understand, they dumbed it down a lot of the technical jargon that is in the, their model ordinance and something like towns ordinance. However, my understanding is they no longer want that document out in print. They want, they no longer want it used because it's out of date and it's not current with modern-day ordinance and stuff. What I would do like is offer my services to the town should they wish to try and develop some type of document to help. I'm happy to help and assist in that, and this is something I've had experience with. Last comment I have has to do with some comments made regarding the great, condition of Great Moose Drive and the impact that Bryant's brewing on it. In my 20 years as chief engineer, a great deal of that time was spent analyzing traffic and road conditions. We developed, we actually developed a set of standards for Washington County, Maryland, on adequate public facilities. What's an adequate road based on winding traffic? The paved surface out there right now is 20 feet wide. That road, depending on your classification, whether you want to use federal highway or an ASHTO, another national organization, is considered a local road or a two-lane rural road. All right? 20-foot paved surface easily meets those standards in many, many, many jurisdictions. Okay? The traffic generated by Bryant's brewery, we talk about peak hour traffic, which is the most traffic they have coming in and going out in the busiest time. Okay? Normally, it's somewhere in a neighborhood of 10. You may have five come in, five going, over the course of an hour. That is pittance compared to what the capacity of the road is. The problem with the road is not the capacity of the 20-foot wide pavement, it's the people walking down the middle with their dogs that thinks it's a path, or the people that want to park on it thinking it's a parking lot. I was on the road the other day. One of the guys that runs a construction operation had an excavator right against the edge of the road, and out in front of it was a pickup truck halfing the road. That's the problem. That is not Bryant's brewing doing, it's not something they can fix, it's not anything other than that individual can fix. In closing, I know I've been a little long-winded here, I apologize. I would like to say that me and my wife were in full support of the new shoreland zoning ordinance as it's written, believing it is fair and equitable to all the businesses, recognizing the problems they all have. And it helps protect the water quality in the lake. I'm a fisherman, I fish all over the lake, I do not want to see it damaged. And I believe the ordinance as written is a fair, a fair document, allowing people to develop their land within reason, so they can protect their investment, but at the same time, not stifling and cutting things out. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much for your comments. Well done. We have somebody standing up back there, but could I hold you just for a second? Because he's had his hand up a few times. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Rick Milligan. I'm up on the Morrel Pond Road. I'd like to ask a question. How many here have been in Bryant's brewery? You've been there. Okay, you socialize there, right? Did you for one second think you were in a bar? I've heard the word "bar" and "restaurant" thrown around, it's neither one of those two. You got to walk through his little brewing room to get into a tasting room, and then there's a sit-down area. He used to have an old antique car there, and he moved that out to make a sitting room. It's more of a social thing, and you talk about people enjoying themselves on the lake. I've been there a number of times, and everyone thoroughly enjoyed themselves there. So, does it make a difference who's enjoying themselves, where, and why they're enjoying themselves? Just putting it out there to you. Bob is, he jumped through his butt to make sure, and it was a hard, fast rule if you were there, you couldn't put your vehicle on the road. It had to be off in his yard or up on Vicarie Lane, and he had shuttle people, he had people working volunteering to move people back and forth as they wanted to come and go. He was adamant. There was no cars up and down both sides of the road. I've been there many times. It's just not true. You're spreading misinformation to make your point fit the other side or whatever. I'm against that. And I also feel, my opinion, if you're going to do anything that's concerning businesses, plural, in town, it should be, "As we go one, we go off." You don't just pick one out and ostracize them and isolate them and then all of a sudden rub them off the map. That's not fair. That's not democracy, and that's not the way America works. Everyone's in it together. And if you work together and could get together as a club of businesses and talk about your differences and talk about ways we can enhance this thing called business in Heartland, you might get further down the road than sitting there biting each other's backs about it. I'm offended by the mailer I got from the tolls in my mailbox. You use the word "illegal," and that was a label. It wasn't an adjective. Illegal business, illegal this. You know, you're trying to destroy the guy, just to get rid of him so you can enjoy yourself the way you won't enjoy. But all the rest of us are going to have to give up our way of enjoying ourselves out at the lake. I grew up on Unity Lake, and there was parties all over the lake, all summer long, out on boats. People used to go and tie their boats in a circle and have a party out on the water. You know, it's just, people are just barking up a bad tree, and you're leaving a bad taste in everybody's mouth, and I'd like to see everybody come together and work this out to a way that's going to make it more equitable for everybody, not just one side or the other. That's not the way, it's not the way to be adult about it, for crying out loud. Thank you.
It's your turn. By the way, thank you very much for these comments and having the audacity to come up in front of everybody and get your point of view out there. It's very much needed. Remember, we're going to be meeting again, and let's get this thing right. I very much agree with that. Go ahead.
My name's Joanne Noyes. I work at, I'm sorry, I live at 1037 Great Moose Drive, two doors down from the brewery. I met my new neighbors, and as we always do, sorry, too loud? Okay. I always greet my new neighbors that have come in. I walk every day possible. We have animals, yes, we walk with the animals. We all enjoy the lake, and that's what we're there for. We love the lake. I agree with Rick when it, this is not the proper place for it. I understand that we're here for the zoning, but that's kind of what created the zoning. This is, let me see, it would have been about the fall of 2020 that the Bryant's moved in, and I didn't have a chance to meet them then, but I did meet Bob and Zach, that's following spring. And so I introduced myself, I stopped by and introduced myself, said hello. He was outside working in the yard, and we got to know each other a little bit. I enjoy his company. He's a nice person, but this whole business was never mentioned. I had seen him doing a little brewing outside in the machine, and so I stopped in and asked what kind of brewery it was. And he was just messing around with it, said he'd come from Florida, enjoyed doing it, and that he had bought the residence where he is now, because it does have that four-car garage. And that's what it is, a four-car garage. There was never a business there before, dealership. And I met him that spring. I did as I usually do, you know, in time, we got to know each other a little bit, and I invited him for dinner, we brought him some food from our garden. And when he told me event at the first meeting, he said it would only be a tasting room, that he was working on licensing, and it was going to be a tasting room, and no more than six people could come in. And when they came in, they could only purchase it and leave. He didn't have even the can shed, he didn't have all of the equipment, all the proper permits. And that's what it was all it was supposed to be. Someone coming in and leaving, not staying there. Last year, it grew into, at least, well, I can't tell you how many exactly, but then it was concerts, and then it was a permanent place for people to stay. At one concert last year, be it a concert, whatever you want to call it, a party, it was much more than our parties that we have individually on the lake. There was groups of people that came in, and when it was all said and done, we're talking in August, early August, when it would have been extremely warm, and you've got people sitting there drinking, you know, two and three hours enjoying it. I loved enjoying doing things like that as myself. But when it all was done with, we're talking between the heat and the fact that people are sitting there drinking and not really realizing maybe how inebriated they might be, then the traffic goes. The traffic was coming by water and also coming down the road, extremely dangerous. I stood at my window and looked down at the lake because two small boats, one was towing the other backwards because the second one had broken down. They were leaving that area, and it was very obvious, it was very unsafe. There's a small area there for the boats to come through, and the first one was looking backwards, driving across the other side of the lake, or diagonally, but his intent was to get there on the other side of the lake, and he actually was towing the other one backwards while he was looking backwards at his friend. He had a tube behind his head, couldn't see anything. So I stood there with my phone in the hopes I didn't have to call 911. Extremely dangerous. And if a boat had come through quickly, there would have been a horrible accident. And as far as people walking down the road, you know, to actually speak to one of Rick's points too as well, initially, there wasn't any shuttles, or what you might want to call it, shuttle down the road. When this all started initially, back in the summer of '21, people were parking on everyone else's property. They were blocking the road on both sides. If an ambulance or fire truck had to get through, it was impossible. It was not possible. It wasn't until all of those complaints that actually they started the shuttle service up and down the road. And I appreciate that, they were trying to alleviate the problem. So, you were talking about how fun and wonderful it is after, we'd already had a year of pure craziness. As to the width of the road at the beginning, we're talking tractor-trailers, huge, heavy equipment. There was no way you were going to get by safely or as a resident, someone who lived there, you couldn't get through. You couldn't, you had to wait for all of it. So, yes, everything that was quoted just before me wasn't there to see it while it was under construction, as it started, and the fact that the neighbors were lied to. We were told it was just a tasting room, and it would be nothing more. We were all friendly to them, yes. My husband as well. You know, we were there, we wanted to support you, because that's all we thought it was, some people coming in and leaving. I enjoy you as a neighbor, but I do have a problem with the business. And I don't think we can compare what's needed downtown to a business in a residential area, a quiet, peaceful place that people come to enjoy. They should not be subjected to any of this. It is not a personal problem as well. My name is... people were parking on everyone else's property. They were blocking the road on both sides. If the ambulance or fire truck had to get through, it was impossible. It was not possible. It wasn't until all of those complaints that actually they started the shuttle service up and down the road. And I appreciate that. They were trying to alleviate the problem. So, you were talking about how fun and wonderful it is after we'd already had a year of pure craziness. As to the um, width of the road at the beginning, we're talking tractor trailers, huge, heavy equipment. There was no way you were gonna get by safely or as a resident, someone who lived there, you couldn't get through. You couldn't. You had to wait for all of it. So yes, everything that was quoted um, just before me wasn't there to see it while it was under construction, as it started, and the fact that the neighbors were lied to. We were told it was just a tasting room and it would be nothing more. We were all friendly to them, yes. My husband as well. You know, we were there. We wanted to support you. Cause that's all we thought it was. Some people coming in and leaving. I, I enjoy you as a neighbor, but I do have a problem with the business. And I don't think we can compare what's needed downtown to a business in a residential area. A quiet, peaceful place that people come to enjoy. They should not be subjected to any of this. It is not a personal problem as well. My name has been used a few times, misquoting us overall as welcoming the business, which we didn't. We welcomed the neighbor. And also, we've seen our name in print. My husband had an email read over one of the select board's meetings. And that's video, and it went to YouTube calling him a liar. All of this craziness, all of the craziness um, that's going on. It's not personal. It's us just trying to save our neighborhood.
Thank you for your patience in getting to the mic. It took us a while. Any other comments while we're here? Yes?
We've all talked tonight about downtown Heartland, Moose Drive. What about the Big U Hill? Are there businesses? Is that going to be considered a business-friendly area in the zoning? And part of the reason, I don't know if it's, there is a building out there now on the downside of the Big U Hill going towards the transfer station. I don't know what that is. It's a big building. It has no windows. It has a lot of activity. And I didn't see it listed on the businesses. I, I'm not, I'm not.
If it's not in the shoreline zone, then it would not be for the shoreline zone ordinance. I'm not familiar with what map and lot. If you could get me the, either a physical address with the map and lot, then I would know. But if it's not in the shoreline zone, then it won't be in the shoreline.
Okay, well, that, that could be. And that's the reason I asked the question. But.
It's way up on the top, right? That's what I'm thinking of. Okay, near 43 off the, yeah, that's not the shoreline zone. Which is not within the 250. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Good enough. I just didn't know how many businesses were lining up to get into Heartland.
Others at this time. Yes, sir. You know what's gonna happen, Dave. Get right up here.
I have a question, I have a question for the selectmen. So I have a property, my name is David Bernard. I live on Morrel Pond. So I have a property on Morrel Pond and it's currently zoned. It, it's zoned limited residential. If it were to be changed, just assume in the future for some reason it's to be changed. If, if my property on Morrel Pond were to be changed from this limited residential to some other zoning or to be proposed to be changed, what is the formal process by which I would be notified? Am I simply to read the paper or would I be notified in some legal way that the town or the zoning authority is considering changing the zoning of my property? What I'm, what I'm saying is. If, if for example, an individual property or even a whole set of properties were scheduled to be changed from zoning X to Y, as an owner of X, am I entitled to be notified that that's under consideration?
I would certainly expect you to be notified if your property and all of your, and especially your neighbors, you certainly would receive a letter that those properties are getting a variance or they're changing their their statuses, as their zoning qualification. But I think there's something wrong with a municipality changing your zoning for your property without you knowing about it. I mean, that's an obvious, big problem. So are you talking about specifically changing your property? What's the notice that's given to you? I don't think that your property, I don't think your property should be changed. So I don't think the zoning of your property should be changed by a municipality without you knowing about it.
So I received, I received a map in the mail that indicated that it would be changed. And it was from KVCOG, Council of Governments. So I'd like to know how it was in the mail. I got a letter or a, or an official map from KVCOG that showed my home in a new zone. It was in limited residential. It was an official map from KVCOG, which I received in the mail.
Dave, I can't answer that because I wasn't aware KVCOG would be promoting this. I can tell you that on, I believe it was April 3 meeting, we had a vote here to put this question forward to the town meeting. And I voted no because nobody had been notified properly as far as I could see. And I was the descending vote. It was two to one. I voted no. Because I didn't think, because I, I saw too many flaws in this proposal. So I voted no. So that's, I guess I, I hope that answers your question. I didn't want it to be changed without you and everybody having proper notification.
I appreciate that. So I guess the question I'm still asking is, how did I get that map? Why did, why did I get a map? Because when I called KVCOG, they said they hadn't released it.
I, 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 I have to defer this to Kim because she would, she's, she's been in charge of of doing this, of doing all this research. I don't know anything about KVCOG knowing anything about this.
The town did not mail out maps or letters to residents. I've heard about letters and I've heard about things, but I, I don't have. I'm not a Heartland resident. I didn't get anything at my address, but I'm not a Heartland resident. So I don't know who did the mailing. I can't speak to it. I don't know.
But Heartland is a member of KVCOG. We, right, we're, we have, we have a membership with KVCOG. So I don't, the select board had nothing to do with alerting KVCOG. I don't know if it happened at the town office or not.
One quick question. Can I put in a doggy daycare? My husband's retiring in a year or so. We're gonna live at the lake full-time. I love dogs and I don't walk in the middle of the road. I'm inside the road. I have a business of dog, taking care of dogs. I don't know. If I measure it, I have a double lot. I guess my point is, by letting a business go in, are we setting a precedent? Okay. So no businesses are gonna go in then unless they have met all of the requirements?
You need to meet the 60,000 square foot, okay? Now, the, the question at hand will be, what is the business? What other structures are on that, say, lot, right? How much lot coverage do you have? That's why when I said earlier, that would depend on those specific lots. Because if you got a, a huge house, you got 20 sheds and you're covering over your whole lot and you wanna add another structure to add a building, you, you might not be able to do that. You wanna have the square footage and you can't build a skyscraper.
So does he have the square footage?
Nobody does.
As I said, nobody does.
Okay, so if he doesn't have the square footage, then how can?
So that's why it's on the special local condition list because not one business.
So then why can't I come in afterwards and get a, a special variance?
This is it. This is the special local condition list.
And this is the only one?
This is the list.
So we're not gonna have another business five houses down?
They can come in if they don't meet the square footage, they don't meet the height, they don't meet the vegetation requirements. They can't do it. Does that answer it?
Well, I'm just trying to understand this because I'm coming to this situation very late. I got stuff in the mail and knew nothing about this. What, and, and my husband has been down visiting on the lake. I have not visited because I'm just too busy. So, and I am very welcoming and have been very happy to talk to people on the road.
Yeah, if you don't have the 60,000 square foot free, and, and then it depends what other structures do you have? Do you have a home on that? Do you have a shed? Do you have, you have to calculate all of that into a total footprint. And from what I see on that lake, just in general with the lot sizes, I know very few lots that will allow anything to have that space to have a 60,000 square foot open spot for a commercial business.
So plan a variance then is what you're saying?
The plan is to give all of the businesses on the special location list because none of them meet the square foot. None of them are 60,000 square feet or better. It's not just for Bob. It's not just for Jim. It's not just for Mammy's. All of them are included on that list.
Are those, area? There's a building right next to commercials all. Yes. So houses right.
Okay, I would remind everybody that one step at a time, if you're gonna be talking, please address the podium and come to the podium to answer because I'm sure not everybody heard Chris's remark right there, right? Chris?
Yeah, the question was, is the downtown residential area, right today as we stand here, it is limited residential?
No, I'm talking, his is residential area. Right, okay.
They all are.
Obviously downtown shouldn't be residential, correct?
You would think.
Okay, so.
You would think, so we're trying to fix that.
Okay.
We're going through a process to fix that. That's the whole purpose of being here.
And I guess my point to all of you is that I trusted all of you to look out for my best interest. I told my mother to vote for you because you're a state trooper. I don't feel like anybody had my best interest at heart. When I have to hear about all of this stuff from a woman I don't even know and never heard of in the mail. I get that, but I'm just saying. I trusted you. I told my mother to vote for you.
Just for clarification, all of you have this zoning map, this proposed zoning map. Originally, all of the red on Great Moose and Morrel Pond were going to be changed to limited commercial. That got reversed and all of the red on the map now is staying where it is, but if you look down the shoreline on Great Moose Drive, you'll see a purple dot. That is representing the only commercial lot that will be allowed on the lake. To make it also clear, this is not a variance. This is a permanent change. That will be very difficult to ever change it back. So, this is, this is Kim's way. And I know she's worked really hard at this. I know she has. But this is her way to make a fair situation to bring all the businesses that are non-compliant, because right now the entire town is limited residential. And I'm just learning that myself in the last couple weeks or months. So in her effort to make the whole town compliant, the only thing that she could have done, because if you look on that map also, the yellow is below the dam pretty much, down to Pellmyra Line as, as most of it. That's the um, general development zone, which is what it should be. It's a little bit more, less restrictive than commercial. It will, it's still in the shoreline zone. You still need to be 75 feet from the water. You still need the setbacks. It's all the same thing. But the, the main, the, the only substantial change is that one lot that's gonna remain commercial. And that is 1009 Great Moose Drive. I think that's the address. So that's really, but it's not a variance, to make that clear. It's not a variance. And the other little caveat that I would offer, and I've offered it before, is I would, I would, I would offer a sunset clause on this. So in case the gentleman that does own that property ever chooses to sell it, it's not selling a commercial lot. It's selling a lot that would revert back to limited residential. And from that point on, it's gotta get a variance or it's gonna, or it's gonna remain limited residential. I would like to see that. And now that it's not gonna be voted on this next Saturday, maybe the poss, maybe the chance is there. I wish there was a way to fix this for Bob, for Bryant's Brewing. I don't know if there is one unless it remains commercial.
Okay, so it looks like we have three more comments and then we're gonna be moving on to the building and property maintenance while you're all right here. Might not be as interesting, but we have to do that too. You had your hand up first.
So my question is for Bob. I understand, so if this passes, I guess it's kinda bottom class. Let's, let's go that route. If this passes, let's just say this passes whenever we do decide we're gonna vote on it. He still has to do a DEP anyway, correct? Am I correct, Bob? So I mean, this doesn't, I mean, it fixes the problem for us, I guess, so to say, but your problems are still way down the road. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, Jerry, would you like to say a few things? I can see you frothinged a bit there.
Jerry Martin, 26, North Street in Heartland. I'm gonna address this guy's question. This is all getting reverted and changed by town ballot. You were asking the question, well, how can they just do this without notifying me? This is what it looks like, okay? They can't just arbitrarily do things without a town vote, okay? Does that clear up? Yes, you're, you're not alone, subject to whatever willy-nilly. And again, um, I don't wanna speak for the board in its entirety, however, I've had conversations with the tolls and it sounded a lot like this. It's not the charge of this board to pick winners and losers. We don't do that. We open an umbrella for all the businesses that were affected. We had many, many businesses. You've seen the list or you should see the list. You can get a copy. We have to put a structure up for the DEP to include everybody. We are no more capable of voting multiple times to make this happen than any one of you. When it comes time to vote, we have one card. We'll raise it yea or nay, just like the rest of you. If that makes it clear. Thank you.
Would you like to join us or would you want the microphone?
So I'm Lisa Sauer. I live on Great Moose Drive. And Kim, I think this question is for you. What happens to the people who have right-of-way property to the lake? But the majority of their 60,000 square feet is on the opposite side of the road? How does that, for businesses, can they build a business if they have a right-of-way, but their property, the majority of their property is on the opposite side of the road? So not abutting the shoreline?
It's what type, what part of that property falls within the 250 that'll make it the shoreline zone? So if you are out of the 250 feet from your, from the, your watermark, so is the property in the shoreline zone? Is it out of the shoreline zone? How much of it is in the shoreline zone would come into play?
Okay, so your right-of-way to the shoreline would not necessarily make your 60,000 square feet on the opposite side of the road shoreline?
That'll depend on, that'll depend on if you own the other half and who owns the other part. Like if you can give me an example better of like a particular lot, then that would be the way to go. You need 60,000 square feet within the shoreline zone to have a commercial build, commercial building, 60,000. You need sixty thousand square feet within the shoreline zone to have a commercial buil, commercial building, sixty thousand.
And the shoreline zone is two hundred and fifty feet from the watermark?
From the watermark, yes, yes, ma'am.
And so, even if a small part of your sixty thousand square feet is in the shoreline zone, does that make the remainder of your property in the shoreline zone?
No. I think I'm following you. I think I'm following you.
Okay.
Okay, last question on this topic, if you would join me. Thank you. Will you be addressing either direction?
Uh, I know the audience, I just, well, yes. I, it both actually. I have a question.
Go ahead.
First, I would just want to add a comment to your, your statement about the DEP. I've contacted the DEP and they can only advise the town. The planning board makes the rules and passes without DEP. The DEP can only advise the town they have informed, they have emailed them. Um, they can't impose their rules because of the town is in charge of shoreline ordinances enforcement. The town planning board does that. The DEP cannot enforce. The town has to do that. So, if he gets this done, the DEP has no say in this matter. The only thing the DEP did tell me was that the plumbing permit was illegally installed because it was put forth as a temporary tank. And yes, that is in violation of the state. That's the only thing the state can do at this point. But my question is compensation for our neighbors. Diana Emery is right next door. And of course, Jan Dros is our next door. I'm the next door over. My property will lose twenty percent of its value by state equations when you bring in a commercial building into our property. That's nothing for you people sitting out there, this fellow who likes to drink. That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars off of my property. Are you going to give that up? Should I give that up? What compensation have we got for losing twenty percent of the value and not being able to sell our camps as Lake Furt camps? It's not recreational. We have, it's going to be beside a commercial building. You guys don't understand. Today, I had another vehicle turn around in my driveway. That's nothing. We own a dog. My dog barks during the weekend. I have probably five cars a day turn around in my driveway. My dog barks. You know, it's nothing to anybody else. It sounds very minor, but twenty percent of your life savings having to listen to your dog, having to come down here? This is unnecessary. It should not be allowed in the lake. And these guys all know this already. And I'm sorry to say this, but they've already said they're in favor for the project. The DEP is moot at this point. It, it, this has been an approved deal. As for Brian saying that he has talked to all the neighbors, Diana Emery, my neighbor, has never spoke to him. The very next-door neighbor has never been spoken to by the Bryans, okay? Don't believe it. I have never been on Facebook, I want to tell you that. I never went on YouTube. It's a poison. Don't ever get on that stuff. Uh, I never have. And I understand that people are upset with. I don't want to read anything like that. I know you guys, uh, you want to enjoy life. And this right here has not been an enjoyable experience. And someone getting into my wall is certainly wrong.
Hey, Hadley. Can Chris rebut that part about the DEP to answer that, please?
Okay, we're going to have Chris's, uh, comments on this and then we're moving on to the building maintenance.
Yeah, so, so, uh, the DEP is, is, uh, what Vera said is exactly right. The DEP guides you. They don't do enforcement. Um, however, they are involved with the negotiations and the discussions that are going on with the holding tank. They're fully aware of what's going on and they're involved in that. So, uh, at, at this point, we have no way of knowing what's going to happen for sure. Uh, they're two separate issues and we still need to deal with our shoreline zoning regardless of what happens with that. So, we do not, we can't stand here and, and specifically say that, uh, he's going to be able to keep his, uh, holding tank at this point. Um, is that fair? We, we really don't know yet, so.
So, I just wanted to, for full disclosure, there was a comment earlier, I think by Mrs. Noise, that said that, uh, Mr. Littlefield called Mr. Noise a bold-faced liar. It was confirmed by a few comments over there. For full disclosure, Jerry and I at separate times talked to the town manager, told him we thought that discussion was inappropriate. We want to be as civil as possible. And as I understand it, you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Chris Littlefield called you Mr. Noise? Did he call you? Okay, hold on just a second. I'm talking to Mr. Noise. Did he call you, sir?
He came to my house and apologized personally for his shortcomings and his unbecoming character.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. And did you accept his apology?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Please.
Okay, just as exciting to discuss is the building maintenance, so let's get into that. I think Kim has some words to say.
As everybody exits, nobody likes to talk trash. Okay, so I will keep this brief. Um, in the past, the town of Heartland had a one-page property maintenance ordinance, one page, that talks about the penalties and enforcement for all the things we don't like around town, which is people keeping their trash on their lawns, hoarding things, junk vehicles, you name it. I could go on forever on that list. It's big. It's everywhere. It's in Heartland. It's in all the towns around us. Uh, to take people to court, if it's even possible, if the courts will hear the case. This went around when I started back in the town, when I first started working here. It's weak at best. There's not enough meat in it to hold people accountable, whether that's landlords, residents, property management companies. Building maintenance ordinance, well, along with MUBET code, uh, which we all have to follow for building codes, but our town is small enough that we don't have to enforce it, but people still must follow it. We captured the information for setbacks and whatnot and put it into one, not a thirty-pager, thank goodness, nine-page document requiring people and telling them, this is what we expect when it comes to the maintenance on your property. Everything from lot sizes to setbacks. It touches base on MUBET codes that the builders are supposed to follow in the state of Maine. If you look at it, it talks about certificates of occupancy. It's here and it will be at the special town meetings. You have time. If you have not had a chance to look over it, you still have plenty of time to take a read on it. We needed more meat, along with documentation, along with photos. So, if we get a chance and we can't get somebody to clean up their property by asking nicely, because that's really what I tried to do first, is just work with the people and see if there's a reason um, as to, you know, why they have excessive trash all over their lawns. And, and we know where those properties are. Um, I have a list started that I'm going to be circulating around. This is exactly what this is. It spells out the violations. It spells out what we're expecting people to do to keep their properties clean. Do you have to keep your grass and your lawns? Do you have to eat off it? No, but you can't keep it twelve-foot high so that we have critters running everywhere. Um, there's nothing more I would like to do to encourage people to, to lead by example, um, to keep your property picked up. Do you have to have the nicest house on the block? Absolutely not. But do you need thirty-five bags of trash that's been sitting out for five weeks? Nobody wants to see that. And that's exactly what this is about. Open for any questions. I know we've been here a while, so I don't want to read this line by line, but it is here. We have a copy here. It is on our website as well. If you, if you didn't pick up a copy or you need one, you can reach out to me. Yeah, it's going to be coming to the special town meeting and it'll be getting to the next meeting as well. So, this will not be voted on for the May sixth. This in the shoreline zone will be at the next, due to the rolling thunder, um, situation. Yes, John?
What is it?
No, no.
Yeah, that was stupid.
I never follow the rules. Um.
It's not, it won't go.
It says.
This is just a draft?
I know it says, it is draft, but it also says adopted May sixth, twenty twenty-three.
We were setting it up for town meeting. If it didn't get adopted, obviously, if, if it didn't get adopted, it wouldn't be adopted. But that's just on the cover page. This is just a draft?
Okay.
I, I think everyone's meeting, these are drafts for meeting?
Kathy again. Ooh, oh. Um, these are draft drafts. How do townspeople get these changed if we want to change these drafts?
Public hearing.
Which is when?
Taking the comments.
Which is when?
This one will be coming up. We have to redo it because of the rolling thunder.
Right.
So, this was going to go towards town, but unfortunately, we can't do that for the May sixth because the ad did not make it in, take the walls to do that.
Okay, so.
This has been presented before. This has been out there quite some time.
So, with the comments you've heard tonight, again, how do the drafts get changed? Or maps get changed?
I can answer.
Thank you.
Want to sit down while I do this or you want to? Okay, the, these types of documents are near and dear to my heart because they have a lot of meat. Uh, I was a selectman when we had the one-page jobbing and that was the pits. Very, very hard to enforce. It wasn't written well enough. It was something that we just put into place, wasn't good enough. This is going to be good enough. So, to answer your question, turn the first page. Everybody turn to the first page. So, it starts out by talking about legalities, but when you get down through it, they're going to start to talk about individual items. And Kim just mentioned, take the time to read it. I would say over again, this is your chance. Read each one of them. Put your notes in between the lines so you have intelligence to talk about the next time we meet, that you get your, uh, question answered specifically. Don't go willy-nilly. Don't make accusations. Go directly by what each one of these item, excuse me, line items say and put in your notes. Now, to change them, this is all going to go for a vote, right? So, I can see in that special town meeting, which by the way, is a great idea for those two items, chilling out and going over these items. And it may like on a budget committee, it may take a while to cover each one of these items. Because when you get done, you're going to be voting whether do you want to accept this the way it is. And I implore you, don't accept it the way it is if you do not like it. This is a start. They've done a fantastic job pulling all the information together and ending up with just the nine pages. I would just tell you, read it, make your notes, make your comments. You know how it goes in town meeting? Somebody makes a motion to accept and then we get to discuss it. Yee-haw, right? We get to discuss it. And if you want to do it by line item, these guys will be ready. They're part of what you're seeing in front of you. Don't hesitate to stand up in front of a group, come to the microphone and say, I disagree with item five, the building permit. And this is why I disagree with it. And here's my reasoning. Don't just stand up and come to the microphone and say, I want it changed. Give us a reason. That's all I'm saying. I'm not on the board of selectmen now, but I'm telling you, the way they operate is parliamentary procedure. And once you can open the floor for discussion, that's you guys. That's your turn to say whatever it is you want about a change in this thing. And when you're done, you have something we can all accept.
Thank you, Hadley. What I'd like to add to that, it is better if you can have the conversations and the discussions at the public hearing. Once we get to town meeting, it is a little bit more difficult to change because when we do the adoption of that, um, ordinance that day, it's at its entirety. Yes, you can make changes to it, but we have to make sure that it gets documented properly and all of that. It is better to do it, have it, uh, changed prior to the day we show up for town meeting to vote on it. And, and the opportunity is at the public hearing. So, if you have, uh, you voice a concern here in this forum and, uh, we can do a straw vote. We can do something, uh, that gives us some indication if the majority of people want to change. Remember, it's going to be a majority situation and, uh, but just think about it from that perspective, please.
Yes, Tom?
To hit on what Chris just said. To hit on what Chris just said. Like I said earlier, I'm not for or against you and I'm not for or against him. But looking at this, from what I gather tonight, ninety percent of the people are here because of you two, okay? I mean, am I wrong in saying that? Okay, why, I feel like his situation should be separate from the other businesses in town. Because if, if this is voted down, all these businesses are in trouble. But now, when you got fifty percent of the room over here for him, fifty percent of the room over here for them, if they win, all these businesses are in trouble. So, why, why wouldn't it be separate? So that one business is in trouble instead of ten? I agree. I, I'm just saying, I feel it should be separate. Uh, I just think that for a couple of different reasons. One, you're going to put ten, ten businesses in jeopardy, okay? By taking a chance on that, they're going to win. Or you're strong-arming this side of the room to vote yes because they don't want to put nine other businesses out of business. Do you see what I'm saying? I just think that two should be separate.
Thank you. And keep reminded that we're going to have another public hearing on this. That was, uh, out of the topic for this particular thing. We're talking about the maintenance right now, but thank you for your comments.
He said this was the time to get it changed.
Yes.
It's too bad they have to walk up here. It's a definite. But the school board will be sending out the school budget to vote on June thirteenth. It might be something that you've got a whole month and a half to get this together so that it doesn't cost the town more money by having two votes.
A special town meeting is not like no other special meeting.
No, but you, wouldn't you have time to do a special town meeting between now and June thirteenth so that you could vote June thirteenth?
No, you have to vote in the town meeting. Special town meeting is special. Uh, if we do a restful amendment, we don't have time enough. I think there's a nine-day, uh, test vote look at. But a restful amendment will require way more, uh, time.
Thank you, Robin. I don't know about you guys, but I just can't wait to see what the taxes are going to be on, uh, RSU nineteen.
You might surprise.
I hope so, yeah. Awesome. Is that good news we're hearing? Everybody hear that? It's her fault. It's good news. Anything else before we close for the evening? I'll take a couple more comments and then we'll close. I'm, I'm sorry. Any more comments on the building ordinance?
Read your draft.
See what I said? Read that draft and make your comments. Do you want to close the meeting, Chris?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We know this is. We know this is stressful for everybody, and we know that it is an emotional situation. Kim said it earlier, no one is gonna be more excited about having an end to this than the staff in the town office. Uh, we, uh, we have spent hours and hours debating this, we've changed direction several times, uh, we are in hopes that we are providing a product to you that is the best for the majority. We will never make everybody 100% happy, it's impossible, and it will never happen. We have to do something that is best for majority. So thank you all for coming out tonight, thank you Hadley for moderating, thank you selectmen for being here as well, and thank you to the planning board members that were present. Have a good evening.